Good evening and welcome to the Village of Westmont official voting board meeting for July 16, 2012. I'd like to call on our acting clerk this evening, our deputy clerk to take the roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Ron?
Here.
Deputy Clerk Kamac present. Trustee Clebano?
Present.
Trustee Scott?
Here.
Trustee Fleming?
Here.
Trustee Nero?
Here.
Trustee Seneca?
Here.
Attorney Zemanek?
Here.
Village manager Cyril?
Here.
Finance director Parker?
Here.
Police chief Mulhern?
Here.
Fire chief Weiss?
Here.
Deputy chief Gunther?
Here.
And from the police department groom.
Here.
So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Please join us in the pledge.
Everybody here.
(inaudible)
Report. The mayor, I have a whole list. Obviously, the celebration this weekend, the Taste of Westmont was a big success. I was only in attendance on Saturday night. That's gotta be one of the biggest crowds that I have ever, ever experienced at a Taste. So, I hope, I hope they did well financially so that we have money to continue for next year. However, I should mention that part of the funding still comes from the Westmont Auto Mile and we need to give them credit as often as we can for helping to function all these, help fund all these activities. There's a whole group of people that I would like to say thank you and we'll make this up in groups and let's start off with the fire, fire department, the police department, emergency management, Westmont Special Events Corporation, all the hundreds of volunteers that came out to help, all of our sponsors and the public works people and also we have, of course, we have some assistance from the Park District as well on this, on this weekend. And then to thank all the hundreds and hundreds of residents and, and friends who came out to attend the Taste this year. If you walked away hungry, it was your own fault.
True.
That's for sure. And the food that I experienced was, was fabulous. And that is all that I have at this point in time. Thank you very much for a very successful event. Our village clerk.
Okay. Actually, I have nothing this evening other than to just remind people that when they get the electric aggregation information in the mail, read it carefully. There's a frequently asked question and information resource on the back of the cover letter and it should address most of the questions involved with the move toward electrical aggregation. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Next, our village attorney, John Zemanek.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to circle back with the board about the presentation that was made before you about the use of the train station, the license agreement for the coffee shop business. As you know, after that presentation, the folks from Brood Awakening weren't in favor of that use and suggested they might be interested in proposing their own use for that space. And there were discussions individually or in groups with the various trustees and no clear consensus was reached on how to proceed. And there were a couple of options. I wanted to throw it out whether you wanted to discuss it tonight or you wanted to circle back at a future meeting after giving it some more thought. But the four options, Ron wrote them down for me so I wouldn't forget, was to act on the original petitioner's request. Number two was allow both vendors to submit their best offer. And the idea behind that was they could come in perhaps before a meeting starts, say at six or 6:30, and make individual presentations as if they were responding to an RFP. And then you would select who you felt was most appropriate. Number three is issue a brand-new RFP. One was done in 2006 for which Brood Awakening, I think, was the only respondent at the time. Well, we could go through that process again. Or lastly, not do any, do nothing at this point, thank the interested parties for their time but say the village is not interested in leasing the space. The votes, the informal discussions with the trustees kind of came down, two for one, two for another, and three for a third, which was the RFP. So, I just wanted to bring it up again since there wasn't clear discussion and get your thoughts. Or if your thoughts are, let's put it, put it on an agenda, can certainly do that. If you'd like me to raise it on my report at the next time so we can speak about it, we can, we can do that. But staff is kind of in a position of, well, what exactly should we do since there's no clear direction? And we don't want to put the petitioner on hold indefinitely.
And what do we hear from the petitioner right now?
Well, we've been communicating with them, the fact that, you know, we haven't scheduled to bring it back to the board. We were doing some additional research trying to find out if there's any documentation regarding what the health department said to Brood Awakening back when we did the first original RFP. They were not able to provide any written documentation. However, their staff has said without question their direction at that time would have been and it continues to be that, you know, you'd have to have plumbing of some sort in that building. It'd have to be installed. So, they, they were pretty certain of that. But they didn't have any file documentation which that they could provide us to provide that evidence.
So, basically, what they're giving you is new information if somebody was gonna do it right now and forget anything that happened in the past?
Well, it's not new in the sense that, that was our understanding of where it kind of stalled last time was that Brood Awakening was informed that they would have to provide that plumbing and that was an additional cost that wasn't anticipated. And they're saying that, you know, that's their position. You'd have to have running water to that area.
Well, I'm confused because I went back and I watched that meeting.
Which one?
The meeting where we approved their concept.
Brood Awakening?
And their concept at the time was that for a rent of $300 a month?
Right.
They would make the coffee across the street and bring it over.
Right. That came up after that meeting.
And that's what we approved.
It was approved.
So, why would they have needed running water if they were gonna bring the coffee over?
My understanding was that, that information from the health department came after that approval by the board.
After. Okay. Okay.
The other issue was the ADA accessibility issue, which was another, I think, cost that Brood Awakening wasn't prepared for. And I think that's when Shannon spoke at the last meeting saying...
Well, we have that opinion from the Capitol Development Board that it's acceptable in its form given the age of the structure.
I guess the main thing is at this point is if, if we're gonna get into the landlord business, I don't want to be like the rest of the landlords in this town and say, okay, here's the space but you have to make all the improvements to it, then we would be saying, we'd be in the same boat as what a lot of these landlords do in these downtown buildings. So, the question comes to play, do we invest the money and upgrade it, put the plumbing in there, put the sinks in there, do everything that you need to do to have it for that type of a shop? Or do we, or do we have them do it and then people can come right back at us and say, that's what the rest of the landlords do and that's what you don't like?
Well, I, I think that's pretty standard just in commercial business in leasing. That's across the board. That's a pretty accepted standard. I think where we'd have to be different than some of the landlords is we'd have to continue to maintain the building and not have broken glass and not, you know, have, I don't know, leaky roofs and things like that. But as far as the build-out, isn't that pretty standard commercially?
It is. I think as economic times got harder, there were more landlord incentives being thrown at tenants for build-out costs, et cetera, et cetera. But typically, no, the landlord's gonna provide a, you know, just four walls and say, you've got to improve it.
It's up to you what you want to do to it.
Well, the other, the other question that comes into play, what about the garbage pickup? How's that gonna be handled?
Typically, that's at tenant expense.
Okay. Where are you, where are you gonna put a, where are you gonna put a container over there?
I don't know.
I mean, that's another problem. And as far as the ADA accessibility goes, I don't care what the Capitol Board says. I want you to show me how you can get a wheelchair into that space over there in that building if somebody wants to get in there. I understand what they're saying. I understand the accessibility of the building and the way it's set, but it's still not geared for someone who has a disability to get into that space. And I guess the other question is, do we, I mean, have we ever thought about possibly redoing the building someplace down the road and not even have that space there anymore?
We haven't talked about it. I mean, that, I know, I've talked to a couple of trustees about the history of the current building. We built that with grant funds in 1985.
Right.
We actually built it on the existing foundation of the old train station. That's why we have the sort of horizontal, vertical limitations that we have, which, you know, predated the ADA Act. We haven't had any recent conversations about rebuilding it, but I don't, I don't know what type of grant funding is out there for that sort of thing now. It's something we'd have to explore.
But even in looking at that, the cost of doing it, even with grant funding, what's the payback on it? Object is, you've got 1,200 people that go in and out of there a day.
Yeah.
How much shopping's actually gonna be done there?
That's right.
To sit there and really displace everybody during the construction phase of it and what do we get back when the building's, I don't think in that bad a shape anyhow and we're talking about a plumbing issue here.
No. I don't think it makes sense to, to change it. And I thought we determined that there was plumbing in there. I thought Steve May determined that there was.
There's plumbing to get us to run to the space.
Yeah.
I think the question is, what do we do? Do we act on the original request? Do we, you know, the four options that John had said? And I, personally, I think the only fair way, since it's the village owns the train station, is to put out an RFP to let everybody bid on it. I think there's a need for it. I don't think it's the board's decision to determine if, who will survive and who won't survive.
Right. Yeah. We're not in the business of competition.
Fair way to do it. And I, and I think if Brood Awakening at this point wants to try to bid on it, then so be it. I really...
We're in the business of retaining businesses, though.
Sure.
And may, perhaps...
We're gonna end up agreeing to disagree on that particular subject, so...
Perhaps, you know, there may be a train, there may be a coffee shop in Downers Grove that wants to move. You don't know.
No, I think the coffee shop in Downers Grove didn't make it because of the two across the street.
No, I mean, the one that's in the train station.
I mean, if we put it out to bid and see who comes in, we get three or four people that are interested.
Yeah. I have no problem doing that.
Doesn't mean you have to select them. I, I mean, to, to turn them away, to turn a business away is, you know, just the opposite of not retaining them. It's not welcoming them either, so I...
But why do you have to have anything in there at all?
I think there's a need for it. I really do.
A need for what?
I think for the convenience factor, that there is people that would buy coffee that wouldn't buy it if they were, if they were just going to the train station. I think there's a market there and I think it's a need and if I was gonna do it, I think it's a good spot.
Well, I think that's what we've all discussed numerous times.
Sure.
And if John wants a direction, let's pull the board and go from there.
Yeah. Okay. I guess I'll ask first, who's in favor of issuing a new RFP?
I am.
I'm okay with that.
I am.
Actually, I'm okay with any one of these things. I am. I want to see that space used. I mean...
I think the RFP's the fairest way. Give everybody a fair shake. We're not locking down to doing anything. We're just seeing what's out there and what they're gonna propose. Why not?
Trustee Clebano, which one do you favor?
I'm not for doing anything. I'm not happy with the ADA accessibility. I don't like the idea of having a button put down there and asking somebody to come from a half-floor up and running down to get their money and serve their coffee and they've got things to do and places to go. The only thing I would accept is if we, when I went and looked at the building, there could be a slight chance, but it would be out of the way of the cost was where that ramp starts going down, the handicap ramp. They could swing it over to the outside of the building to make an entry so that the handicap could go partway down, go into the place, actually see the rolls and donuts or whatever they're serving. But, but I think the cost is gonna be outrageous and I would never ask for somebody to come in and put that cost in and not be assured that the poor people can't even, we put our people through, heck, just going through the county, trying to get through the county health department. And then we're gonna ask somebody to go through a tremendous expense to try to make it ADA. So, as long as it's like it is, I won't go through anything on there that has to do to get our handicap people up to that level.
But if they do meet ADA compliance and it is all okay?
Not if that button is down there. I don't give a darn with the ADA, say they'll accept because somebody else will come in from the ADA and say it's not acceptable. And now you have to make sure that button works. Now, they gotta be tested.
Well, once it's approved and in, if the ADA approves it and it's in, they're not, they can't come back and, they have to be grandfathered at that point.
I'm just saying that, you know, next month, that was somebody who says, no, they don't like it. So, no.
Trustee Scott?
I think it's not fair to the handicap.
No use. At least not at this time. Trustee Fleming?
I, no use at this time until we come to some conclusions with it. I mean, at one point, I was thinking about the RFP, but I mean, I, there's just too many open-ended things.
Okay, we're done. It's three.
Yeah. And I think trustee Emery was against any...
I can live with it.
...for-profit use. And the mayor, to the extent you want to chime in, did you have a preference?
I had thought about the RFP, but I think I'll, I'll take a pass on that, too.
Okay.
So, we'll notify both entities that we're not going to do anything with the space.
At this point.
And we'll record in the minutes, Carrie, that that was the decision since we removed that from the agenda, in case any, any question in the future as to what we did with that.
Appreciate the clarification.
Yep. Thank you.
And I've got nothing else, Mayor.
Thank you. Village manager?
Couple of things, public information items. Tonight, with the weather the way it is, we're scheduled to have our first village-wide truck spraying for mosquitoes.
Oh, good.
Had a conversation at the end of last week with the health department here in the county. They've seen a great influx in the mosquito that carries the West Nile virus. It's that time of the year when they start to see it, when it gets really dry and really hot. It's misleading in that you can be outside and, you know, the early part of the summer where you get bit by a lot of mosquitoes, when it's wet and damp, those mosquitoes typically don't carry the virus. It's this time of the year when it gets dry and hot that they do. So, the advice is to always, if you're gonna be outside for any length of time, put on some type of repellent. The truck sprays will knock them down, but they're not a permanent solution. We do have other aspects of the program, the larva siding and the backpack spraying, which also helps to go towards eliminating where we can. And when, when we do find trap locations that we're consistently seeing the virus, we do try to address that. We worked in the past, for example, with the county where they've had repeated positive tests down at their golf course down in the south part of the community. But I just wanted to mention that to everybody and just use caution when you're outside this time of the year. It's a little early. Usually, August is when you start to see this, so there, there is some fear that it's only gonna get worse from this point forward unless we get significant amount of rain.
Does the golf course do any spraying there, too?
Well, that's the forest preserve. My understanding is, I don't think that they do. At least, they did in the past. I haven't asked this year. But when the issue came up before, that was the information that I had gotten.
Did you mean Twin Lakes or...
Either one. Wherever they do the testing.
I'm talking about the forest preserve.
Oh, yeah, the testing.
Wherever they do the testing, yeah? Do they do the traps?
Well, we have worked with them to go in there and try to address specific areas where we thought they were breeding. But spraying, I don't think the forest preserve does spraying. Okay. The other subject matter was already addressed a little bit. Deputy Clerk Kamac mentioned the electric aggregation. I just wanted to comment on a couple of more specific questions I've gotten that have not come up before. One of them has to do with the two low-income assistance programs that the state has. One is the LIHEP program, which stands for Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program. And the other is the Percentage of Income Plan, PIP. The answer, the question was if I chose to go with the, the village's new aggregation program, do I lose that assistance? And the answer is no, with our current provider, that, that will not be a problem. So, I took at least one phone call last week about that. I don't know if the clerk's office has had any calls like that, but...
Not in that regard.
Okay. But it, I, I saw from some correspondence to, between us and Downers Grove, that they're also getting some of those kind of questions, so I wanted to mention that. And then I wanted to address a question that trustee Clebano had regarding the document that was attached to the letter, which is the chart showing the environmental disclosure of the source of power that our supplier provides. And the question was, how does that relate to the renewable energy certificates? I can tell you that that's not an easy question to answer.
(laughing).
From what I've read and from the conversations I've had with the consultant, this graph represents where their power comes from. And this process of renewable energy certificates is a process that the federal government created that was done to incentivize the, the creation of renewable energy. And the way he explained it to me is, it is true that our supplier is providing 100% renewable energy certificates. That doesn't mean that all of the power to that supplier comes from renewable sources. But because of these certificates that they purchase, it actually creates a market for more and more of that power. And that's, that's the process behind it. So...
It's paper-only.
It's...
We're still getting it from coal or nuclear or no matter what, nothing has changed.
Well...
It's just in paper-only. We're getting 100% renewable.
But it may be help funding.
Right. Because there's probably not enough renewable to meet the demand right now.
The idea is to create a market to keep promoting that type of energy. The problem they have, and I never, ever thought about this until I asked the question, was, you know, when they're running those coal plants, they can't turn them off and suddenly pump the grid full of renewable energy when you buy...
I know. I just, we told them they would be 100% renewable.
These things are running all the time.
And I think it's up to them to see, they're just getting it in certificates in paper, that they're still getting it through the coal or nuclear or however it's being fed to us.
We're getting credit...
They're not gonna get wind power or nothing. Some other towns are gonna get it.
We're getting credit for 100% renewable energy.
Yeah.
That's the best I can explain.
It's probably a question of supply and demand. There's probably not enough supply of renewable energy yet to meet the demand. And this is one way of creating it or getting more.
There's an interesting article in the Tribune. I was gonna pass it your way. I just saw today that with all of the electric aggregation that's going on with all the communities now, that it's hurting the demand for the, the wind energy here in the state. And I didn't get a chance to finish reading the article. I just saw it real late this afternoon, but I'll pass it on to you.
But that one chart just showed that it didn't know where it was coming from. That's, that's why I had questioned it.
There's no way to tell in the grid where the electrons come from? I mean, it's just not physically possible.
I think they would've been better off if they didn't bother with that chart in there.
So, they had to create this system with the renewable energy certificates in order to promote that industry.
Okay. Thank you.
That, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Moving right along. Items to be removed from consent agenda. Any comments?
Yes, I'd like the purchase orders to be pulled.
It's not on here. So, here, move your purchase orders. So, we'll pull that off. So, we can have a motion to approve the consent agenda amended without the purchase orders. Then we'll have a separate vote on the purchase orders. Okay, we have a motion to remove the purchase orders from the agenda. We have a motion.
Are we doing that as a motion or just upon a request from a trustee to remove something?
What's Robert Wilson's order? I assume we could just remove them.
I think, Mayor, the way the ordinance was written is upon the request of a trustee, an item can be pulled from the consent agenda.
Uh-huh.
So, we don't need a motion to remove it. We just need a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended without the purchase orders.
Okay, I see. Okay.
Or you can even say items A, B, and what is it?
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A, B, and D.
A, B, D is fine.
Second.
And D.
Scott.
Nope.
Go, go.
Trustee Fleming? Yes. Trustee Clebano?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Now, we need a motion to approve the purchase orders.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, I had sent an email and I've got most of the answers back. Two of them were emailed. Spencer emailed them and then he came up here with the last three. But the one question that is still open for me is PO 11028899. The one thing that was lacking from our agenda was we had the vehicles, the trucks being replaced. We didn't have any information on the old trucks, on what year. All we had was a vehicle number, 123, et cetera. So, he did give me the information on two of the trucks, but the third truck is the big 96,354, the chipper box. And the only thing he has on there is it's a 2005, but it only has 23,676 miles. It's pretty low in miles. And I'm just curious on what the problem is that we need to spend that much money on a new one if we couldn't squeak through maybe another year or something? I, I don't know. Is it breaking down? What condition? I hate to spend this money for another truck that may only last five or six years.
Again, I'm gonna ask the same question I've asked before. What's the hour meter reading on that truck?
I just spoke with the public works director, Steve May, just barely before the board meeting. He indicated that there is not an hours meter on that truck. They don't have the readings from that. But he does indicate that, that, that is the reason that it needs to be replaced this time is the fact that it has to idle as it's there using the chipper and that, so because of its use and because of its high idling amount of time, the mile, the, the miles look deceptively low. And so, it does have significantly higher use than would be indicated simply by the miles.
Okay. So, and I've asked numerous times and numerous times, and I'm gonna ask one more time. Why do we not have hour meters on our equipment? That's going to tell you the true use on the engines. Now, I would think, we've got some pretty smart mechanics and I would think any truck that you order now or you put together squad cars, fire engines, whatever, can have hour meters put on. And everybody questions the amount of miles that are on the vehicles. Well, granted, the miles are low, but if the hour meter is reading at a high level, that means that engine is idling. It may not be going anywhere, but it's wear and tear on the engine. And that's where most of your heavy equipment gets replaced, is based on the hour readings.
Yes. Yeah. That makes sense. I mean, I could, you know... If you're uncomfortable with this, why don't we just pull this purchase order off for the next...
Yeah. I mean, you know, maybe, you know, maybe give Steve a call and see if we can do something on the equipment going forward. Requires...
I'll leave that up to, I'll leave that up to the board if they want to go ahead with it or wait. It's just, you know, I figured the year, I was surprised to see it was a 2005 with such
It's just, you know, I figured the year, I was surprised to see it was a 2005 with such low mileage, but I understand running the vehicle, the difference, but it would be nice if, if things would be noted, because none of this information ended up in our packet either.
I'm trying to remember, we talked about some of this at the Public Works Committee meeting, but it might have been a while ago. Why don't we just pull it off and let's wait on this one, and we can pull that information for you.
If he doesn't have the answer, it's not going to make any difference, so if he's not going to have the hours, so. I just want to make sure before our residency, we're buying three very expensive, and this is the most expensive one, I want to make sure that, you know, we understand it is definitely needed. I didn't know if it's breaking down, I don't know if we've had trouble, if they've had to have it towed, how much repair work has been on it. We have no information on why it's being replaced, so. The other two being that they were off 40-some thousand and 50-some thousand, and they were 2002 vehicles, yeah, they're, we definitely got our, you know, 10 years out of them, that's great.
Where'd the folder go?
Yes, I do have the purchase orders right here.
Any other questions?
So if, if the board wants to leave it on there, that's fine, if, you know, as long as they made note of it.
I trust Steve May's judgment, and I, you know, he's very diligent with his budget and very careful with his purchases and his expenditures. I, I have no problem going forward with it, and then perhaps we could put on another agenda, Public Works, whatever, Lee's suggestion of adding...
Hour meters.
Sure.
Because I think most of their vehicles...
I, I mean, he's the expert. We're not the expert. He's the expert, and I truly think his judgment is, is one of careful consideration.
But I'm just saying that most of the vehicles are always running, so I can understand the 2002 with higher mileage. I just had a little trouble understanding a 2005 that's low, and it's running probably just as much, so.
We also have to look at the amount of storms we've had over how many years.
Just last summer alone.
Used a ton, yeah.
Last summer alone.
I mean, Steve and I, Steve and I have talked off and on about the hour meter scenario, and...
That's why I was under the impression, I thought he lasted at a Public Works Committee meeting.
But this vehicle probably wouldn't have, this vehicle probably wouldn't have had it on it from the get-go.
Yeah, but most of our other equipment does have some...
The equipment going forward should have that as part of the package.
Yeah, I have no problem going ahead with this.
But this vehicle was so much more expensive than the other, you know, two vehicles to replace, and that's why I want to make sure we got the word on it, so.
It's a, it's a heavy, it's a heavy-duty piece of equipment.
Hopefully, it's heavier duty than the one we're replacing, then. Thank you. I'll leave it up to, if the board is comfortable, go ahead and, we'll, go ahead and vote on it, then at least we have our answers.
Any other questions?
You know what, I think I'll, let's hold off on, at least in my opinion, this way the public can hear Mr. May tell us.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, then we need... Because it doesn't make any difference when or the other, but if the public can sit there and say, the Director of Public Works sat there, and this was the reason why, let's go vote for it. He's not here right now.
Put it on the next, put it on the next set of agendas, the one purchase order, and, you know...
Yeah, even though we trust him, it's nice to have the public here. Why?
Yeah.
I agree.
That's good. So, John, do we have to do a, we have to have a motion to postpone it?
Motion to amend approval of the purchase orders to remove item six, D6.
So moved, Fleming, what the attorney said.
I'm sorry, C6.
C6, yeah.
Second.
Six C.
C6.
Six C.
We have a motion and a second?
C6.
Roll call.
This is to remove.
This was supposed to say this time.
Motion to amend and approve of item D6.
Uh, C.
C.
C is the cat.
C6. C6, my bad. Okay. Roll call, Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Clebano?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
And now we need a motion to approve...
No, we already, we did that already, didn't we?
Attorney have that, right?
Yeah, we already did that. We proved it.
We just removed the one.
Yeah.
Okay.
We voted on that?
So now we can just vote on it?
No, I know, we haven't voted on the rest of the purchase orders. But we need a motion?
Yeah. I made the motion and we seconded.
Okay. Yeah.
So it's a roll call to approve the purchase orders as amended?
Right.
Right.
Okay, and Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Clebano?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Yeah, we made it through that muddy water.
Now we can move right on to seven.
Next item, review of class 16 liquor license. Order to discuss and perform a periodic review of the practice of allowing a customer to bring their own bottle of alcohol BYOB into a liquor-licensed premises.
So moved, Seneca.
Second, Scott. Sorry. Before we do a motion, I don't know that this necessarily requires a, it's not really worded in, in the form of a motion to take specific action.
Oh, okay.
It was a review.
The direction, I think, would be, do we want to review it again in six months?
Okay.
That was the original direction, and...
Yeah, because, I mean, that's something the Liquor Commissioner has control over. I mean, we don't, we can't set that. Alls we can do is ask for reviews, correct?
That's true.
I think another six months...
It'll be in January.
In order.
Okay.
All right.
That's good.
So you want to make that motion soon?
Made that motion, so moved. Review it in six months.
Second.
Class 16 liquor license.
And we have a second.
A second? Roll call.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Clebano?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
New business, 640 Pasquenelli. Fifth Third Bank zoning code variance request. Order to consider an ordinance granting a zoning code variance request from the Fifth, from the Fifth Third Bank to increase the number of allowable signs.
Motion to approve, Clebano.
Second, Nero.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Clebano?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
200 East Ogden Avenue, Mercedes-Benz of Westmont, variance on site landscaping plan, approval requests. Order to consider an ordinance granting approval of the following request from Mercedes-Benz. A, zoning code variance to reduce the setbacks for a landlocked lot into six feet in the B2 district, and B, site and landscaping plan approval for a parking lot addition.